At one o'clock we'll call the meeting to order. Everybody here but Mark.
And Mark will not come here, but he did want me to tell the students that he will be listening to it because he is very interested in hearing what you have to say, but maybe David could not get all the words to say.
So since you may not go on the website to listen to all the board meetings, all the board meetings are recorded so far, Mark has listened to everything that we've done. So, okay, do we have any additions?
There's no additions, but there are a couple of changes. On number five and districts are proud of, that should be 12th grade, 9th 11th grade for Devon. And then also on under personnel, number three, we're going to start the person on May 7th, not May 8th. We have the opportunity to start the person earlier, so we're going to take that opportunity.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the agenda with those changes? Moved by Cheryl, seconded by David. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, say no. Okay, then we are already on the proud of. District 741 is proud of Devon Maher, grade 12 for qualifying for the state wrestling tournament and earning sixth place. Derek Ludwig, grade 12 for qualifying for the state wrestling tournament. Jacob Magus, grade 11 for qualifying for the state wrestling tournament. Derek Ludwig, grade 12. Michael Ludwig, grade 12. Jacob Magus, grade 11. Anthony Wettlet, grade 11 for earning all conference. And I'm not big on this WCC, but it's West Central Conference, right? Is that correct? West Central Conference in wrestling. Devon Maher, grade 12 for earning honorable mention, West Central Conference in wrestling. Kayla Schaefer, grade 11. Riley, grade 10 for earning all conference, West Central Conference in girls' basketball. Taylor Berg, grade 11 for earning honorable mention, West Central Conference in girls' basketball. Kayla Schaefer, grade 11 for scoring her 1,000th point in girls' basketball. Did I see her here? Oh, right here in front, okay. Andrew Top, grade 12. Michael Widner, grade 11 for earning all conference, West Central Conference in boys' basketball. Spencer Seeritz, grade 12. Jordan Roos, grade 12 for earning honorable mention, West Central Conference in boys' basketball. Blair Thielen, grade 12 for earning all conference, West Central Conference High Kick Dance Team. Sydney Riley, grade 9 for earning honorable mention, West Central Conference High Kick Dance Team. Egg Mechanics Team placed 7th at the FFA State Convention. Andy Lenzmeyer, grade 10 also placed 7th individually with Brad Uch, grade 11, John Schaefer, grade 11, and Cory Dahl, grade 10 also on the team. Floriculture Team placed 14th at the FFA State Convention. Tyler Molitor, grade 12 placed 26th individually with Cindy Schlungen, grade 12, and Karma Romanchenko, did I get that right? Grade 11 also on the team. Horse Dunting Team placed 16th at the FFA State Convention. Matt Hartsfield, grade 9 placed 29th individually with Madison Shiro, grade 10, and Tori Jenkins, grade 10 also on the team. State band members at the FFA State Convention, Kenny Olson, grade 12, and Dalton Fluga, grade 10. Abby Malder, grade 12, received her state degree and the star farmer regional winner at the FFA State Convention. Panzo Booster Club for organizing the outdoor grounds cleanup day on Saturday, April 26th. That group was incredible and I think it is safe to say our grounds have not, haven't looked this good in years. John and Heidi Riley for being named 2013-14 Booster Club Fans of the Year. Okay, next on our agenda is public comment. Do we have any public comment?
No.
You guys are right on, right in line here shortly. We need to approve and correct the minutes from the April 22nd, 2014 regular board Motion to approve by Deb Glenn, seconded by Kayla. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, say no. Okay, nothing on the consent agenda? And then we are business number one. Report, receive reports from the middle and high school student advisory councils.
Bruce, we have an addition today in the sense of our reports. We have two groups from our art department here before we get to our actual principal advisory. Our first group that's going to go is a group of students from our advanced art class that has a donation and I'm going to let them go ahead and talk. Do you guys have one person as a spokesperson? Randy is going to tell you about the donation they'd like to make for our school today. Hi.
I'm Randy, I'm an advanced art student here. Today we are going to share our, some of our campuses that we have for our restroom beautification project. It was inspired by the St. Louis Girls Group who at the beginning of the year put little post-it notes around the bathrooms with inspirational quotes and sayings on it and it was very receptive with the students, so we decided it would be a really good project to make the word permanent, permanent around this school. So we talked to Mrs. Flora and with the principal's advisory groups help, we got 24 campuses, enough to put two in each of like the students' bathrooms around. And yeah, that's basically it. We kept it with the inspirational themes that like, you know, sharing all the world. You may say that I'm a dreamer, but I'm not the only one. I hope someday I'll join in a world who live as one.
Would you mind joining the rest of the crowd?
I don't know, is it?
Johnny, can you check the mic?
Can you switch on?
Hey, there we go. Do I have to say all that again then? Okay, perfect. Alright, and this is another one called by Blair Thielen and says, happy girls are the prettiest.
Hi, I'm Taylor Lesh. This is the one I made. It says, be your own kind of beautiful and original is worth more than a copy. And then this one was made by Eric Bisfeldt and it says, the pain you feel today will be the strength you feel tomorrow.
Alright, so mine says, you don't have to be great to serve, but you have to start to be great. I'm doing a picture of my brother. And then this one here is Rebecca Jimenez's. It says, beauty attracts the eye, but personality attracts the heart.
I'm Brooke Hemisch and mine says, shine bright like a diamond. And Sadie Hookried made this one, says if you want to feel rich, just count all the things you have that money cannot buy.
Hi, I'm Rick Aldo and I did, let your smile change the world, but don't let the world change your smile. And Kayla Melzy did, don't let anyone ever dull your sparkle.
I'm Dawn Anderson and mine here says, you can't cross the sea merely by standing and staring at the water. And this one here is done by Justin Schmidt. It says, people often say that motivation doesn't last, well neither does bathing, that's why we recommend it daily.
I'm Adeline Swanson and mine is, too beautiful means to be yourself. You don't need to be accepted by others, you need to accept yourself. And Hannah Cash does this one and says, life is too short to wake up in the morning with regrets, so let the people who treat you right and forget about the ones who don't and believe that everything happens for a reason. If you get a chance to take, if you get a chance, take it. If it changes your life, let it. Nobody said that it would be easy, they just promised it would be worth it.
I am Ader Top and I added this one. It says, champions believe in themselves even when no one else does. And then I also have Ben Fredericks and it says, the secret to life is living it one day at a time.
Okay, I'm Nathan Schultz and this is Jordan Roos's. It says, the winner is one who accepts his failure and mistakes, picks up the pieces and continues striving to reach his goals. And this one is Bryce Savage's. It says, the future is created by what you do today, not tomorrow.
Hello, I'm Alana Ludwig and I made this one and it says, be happy for your life is a gift and you make it beautiful. And then Kelsey Mirian did one that says, beauty is being the best possible version of yourself on the inside and out.
I'm Remington Harper and I made this one, it says, hard work beats talent, but talent doesn't work hard. And Heather Arlo made, what do you need to break, bold and simple, have a comment and they all begin with you.
I'm Marissa Wickham and I made, the habit of persisting is the habit of victory. And Nick Dingman made, don't stop when you are tired, stop when you are done.
And that is all, thank you. Good job.
Those are going to be hung in the restroom. We were looking at from the, the pride, hungries, we're looking at cranes and, you know, like glass cover and some sort. We're still working on that part, but hopefully by the beginning of the next school year we'll have that done in the restrooms. Our next group, I'll have Randy introduce as well. This was another art project and for both programs, Mrs. Whaler has been a fundamental part in, in working with the kids, so I want to give her credit along with the kids in what they've accomplished this semester. With that, Randy, why don't you go ahead and explain this part?
I'm not actually going to do it, Avery is. Oh, I thought you were. Hi, I'm Avery Davidson. Another thing that our advanced art, advanced, another thing that our advanced art students got a chance to do was we got to, a chance to enter our culture, advanced custom culture contest and that was, we got a chance to design our own pair of shoes. And we started with a paper template, this is Kayla's. We started with a paper template and then we got a contest in our own class and the students got to pick their favorites. And then Vancson and Blake Shoes campuses that we can paint on and do whatever we wanted to them. So we got to make our artwork come to life on the shoes. So, and then we took pictures of our shoes and we got a chance to put them online for people to vote for them. Unfortunately, our group did not win, but.
Semi-finals.
Oh yeah, we went into the semi-finals, but our group did not go farther than that. But winners did get a grand prize of $10,000 towards the school's art, art department? Yeah. And the students got a chance to go to Vanc's headquarters in New York. So on the right is Josiah Miller's shoes. He is a sophomore and he's very talented.
He had the artistic category, there are four different categories, so his was just all about art. I had the category, it was local, so either in Paintsville or state, so I didn't have someone other than Minnesota's known for the Four Seasons, so I put those on it. I only had one day to do mine though, so they aren't as best as the other ones, but pretty close.
I'm Kayla Schaefer and I had, did the music theme. I just did notes on the inside and then piano keys, some here.
And I had the sports theme, so I did wakeboarding on one side, I did different sides on each shoes. I did wakeboarding, snowboarding, surfing and skateboarding. So, yeah, those are our shoes.
They're just white.
They come in white and then you just have to paint over it. Yes, do it everybody wants. Yes, only 2,000 schools are picked out of the country.
Alright, with that then we'll go to for high school students, why don't you pay from principal advisory, come on down and go in the first row. Or introduce the stuff.
We're the high school principal's advisory and, my name's St. Estevanier, and we were talking about different ways that we could save money with the lockers and there's like two different types of lockers, right? So the ones over here are all newer and these ones are older, so we talked about instead of replacing all those older ones, that we have enough for all the students to really have a new one, we just be closer together. And also every year there's like 9th grades here, 10th grades here, and then like 11th and 12th and whatever. And so we talked about, instead of like, right now I'm in 9th grade, so I'm right there and instead of next year moving to over here, I could just stay down there, because it doesn't really matter. One of my classes is all the way down there by Mr. Whaler's room in the 6th grade hallway, so none of your classes are necessarily around your locker, so it wouldn't really matter that you have to move all the way down there, so you don't have to rekey all the lockers every summer, you just keep saying one until graduate. We talked about passing the year in.
Yeah, I'm Sydney Riley. And the reason we kind of like talked about like each grade just staying where they were was because, okay, then the outgoing seniors, they would leave their chunk of lockers, then the freshmen would just fill in that and then you'd only have to like rekey that freshman like group of lockers. And then we talked about student representation or on the board, so being an active student rep, like being down there with you guys. And instead of taking notes, because we understand that you went to like a seminar convention stand, we can talk about like more active ways we can participate. So we just talked about being down there, we wouldn't vote or anything, but we would just have perspectives shown from a student perspective. And then we just, yeah, talk with you guys.
Well, I missed the last meeting because I'm on the prom committee and so I was setting up for prom, so I guess I'll just talk about prom. So, do you guys just want to be informed pretty much about what happened?
I think it was just kind of a general statement as a group, if you wanted to share some thoughts about prom or.
Okay. I thought prom was really fun this year. It went really well. We, the car parade was really fun and we kind of changed it up a little bit by parking further, but I don't really think that makes any difference. Our theme was Sunset City, I think. And, I'm on prom committee, so I should probably know that, but. And our after-prom theme was a night in New York and we had a horse and buggy ride come and they brought us around a little trailer on the neighborhood and it was really fun and there was a lot of blow up games and just fun games and some good prizes, so it was really well this year and the dance was fun and the food was fun. The food, oh, not fun, the food was great. We had a buffet this year, we had pasta bar and we also moved our location to the Assembly Grounds Gym, so we had the food and the dance all in the same part. And the thing, a thing that I really liked is they have a game room, so there was ping pong, ping pong ball, what else do we have? Foosball, carpet ball, a bunch of other games and some couches and stuff. And I bet that that really added to, to the prom because a lot of people don't like dance and they find it really awkward dancing. I do, so I just kind of hung out with the game room, so I thought that was cool.
Alright, I'll talk about kitchen. We got a couple of new foods this year. We got some stuffed crust pizza, that was pretty delicious, something like that. We also got a different kind of pizza, chicken alfredo. That was pretty great. We also got chicken pot pie, yeah, that was pretty cool.
What do you guys want to talk about coming up with and having the conversations with Lori and Irene? What do you guys think of that, of having to meet with the kitchen periodically?
I liked it, I thought it was pretty neat. We did like, we talked about what couldn't we have because of sodium levels and carbs and stuff like that, so a lot of our stuff got canceled out, but then. There are probably ways to get it better, I guess.
And it was also really nice that we could be informed about what the kitchen was thinking and that way we could really, okay, and that way we could relay back to our fellow students because all the kids are like, oh, why don't we have shake days? So then we had a meeting, we're like, hey, why can't we have shakes anymore? And then voila, answer, pass it on to students. So I thought that that was really cool and I think that that's something that we should continue to do, just to keep everyone informed and everyone on the same level, so.
Joseph Shendel and Kate Jenkins, please stop the effort.
We also talked with Mrs. Brandt about that, because she's like taking over the SC's funding or whatever. And we talked about with her about like, she talked about, well, you know, our sewing machines, do we really need to like have a unit on that? Like, are they really going to be important? And like, different things that we found important when we took facts and like, what we would, if we took a high school facts class, like what would we want to see and stuff, so that she kind of has an understanding since she's like taking it over. And so we talked about how like, we liked the idea that like, we learned like different, like how to do laundry and. Oh, and like cooking and like just different ways like following a recipe and making omelets and stuff. And so we just talked with her about what we liked and what we'd like to see in high school facts programs.
And any other things that you guys would like to talk about or there are questions from the board that the board would like to ask our group, I guess? I know they were very excited about the opportunity to possibly be a more active participant on the board. Some comments that came up is maybe we would have six people, three from maybe principal advisory, three from more of the student at large, and then they would kind of rotate through meetings possibly because of the commitment and the activities, you know, nighttime activities and those kinds of things. So I think that's something maybe as a board and I, we can talk about if that's, if we want to make that happen for next year, how we structure that to look for the kids' schedule and your schedule and things. Other things? Other comments that you guys have that you'd like to share as far as in the year?
I have a comment with them, I think it's great that I, the whole idea of the lockers, it's like, if we're running into something and it's like, why didn't, why didn't we think of that years ago? It's like, that just makes so much sense.
And custodial time, and I've never thought of it, I thought, oh, what a neat idea, custodial time it will cut down on you because if you look at the number of combinations they have to change, et cetera, that we may, I think it's a very good idea to pursue and look at.
I was trying to be worried about going to the wrong locker.
Getting your locker.
So, so yeah, it was, it was a good conversation. We do have some, some students weren't able to, with the changing in the schedules with athletics and everything, we have had a lot of students heading in and out during the day, so scheduling meetings has been a little up for this last quarter or so. We're looking at getting schedules out to these guys, starting, I think seniors was, juniors this year will start tomorrow, so we'll start scheduling for next year's specific schedules. Other things, or is that about it guys? Are there questions you might have?
I just have a quick comment. Some of the things you brought up, like Mrs. Brant's class where you're working with Chris and Brant on hers.
Yeah.
You brought up that you're working with food service. The students coming to maybe work with us is still definitely working together. The whole deal is to form a, format a team and that's what you're doing and that's, that's really impactful, so wherever that can occur, I think is really good for us. We're also interested in increasing the student population, so if you have ideas there, we're interested.
Well, thank you, everybody.
Before you leave, I would like some help.
Oh yes, Mr. Hewitt does have a request if you can help spread the word and we'll be getting it open by a brief time.
Any of you try to come in on the Land Trans Road in the morning or get out after school's over? Isn't fun. It's awful, so would you do me a favor at this point? You know, I did get a call also from a community mayor who's just had a long trailer that was trying to make the turn and, long story short, it's become a dangerous situation. If simply in the morning and at the end of the day, students and if you tell your parents, just don't use that road. You've got to throw it by the softball, but if you use that, please go slow because students walk on that road, alright? Or come in the other entrances, just don't use the Land Trans Road in the morning or at the end of the day. Because my only other option would probably be to block that road off until like construction is done, just until the city gets done with the project, because everything's getting bundled through that road right now, from semis to long trailers to everything else and if you try to take the Land Trans Road coming out from 55, some of you have already seen how difficult that can be because people fail to leave space.
Could you make an announcement over the intercom so everyone can hear?
Yeah, Lori will do that, but if you would also just let your, your fellow students know that would be best. To tell you the truth, I think the easiest way and simplest way is to have you guys help you with that. I really think it would be easy. And let your parents know too, because otherwise it's just going to continue to be a disaster there, it's just not good. I would really appreciate it.
Thank you very much, everybody. And it's funny to meet, but because of the rescheduling and the band festival kind of hit on the same day, so we only had a few representatives this last meeting. But we did put down some of the comments and thoughts that came up during our meeting, but then I think we can just add, and feel free to add topics or bring up some conversations, okay, you guys? Does that make sense? Alright, does somebody want to take the microphone out? And maybe, who would feel comfortable, maybe starting with the 7th and 8th grade dress of dance. Okay, go ahead, Kayla, why don't you start her off?
Well, our dress of dance was themed like western themes, obviously based on like the. on like, the gold west, like, cowboys and like jail thing we did. And it turned out really nice, we had, the decoration's really cool, like, they probably into it our picture wall with like, a coat on, so it looked like we were like in a jail cell, but then we did like, put it on so you could have your face through it. And, yeah, we just made it really cool. It turned out really nice, a lot of people came and, I think most people had fun.
Any other comments on the dress of dance?
Did you guys like it?
Yes. Okay, how about the middle school play? Was anybody here in it? You guys all saw it, do you want to have some comments on the middle school play? That was a big program for...
Uh, it was good.
Okay.
We did a nice job practicing and, uh, yeah.
We presented it to the whole middle school. How about our talk with Geronimo? Remember the Geronimo presentation that came in and talked about unusable, renewable resources? Anybody want to have any comments?
I think it really helped us look at the energy and how we can use it and stuff. And, just helped us get an idea about what we can do there, what we can help.
And some of you guys have been part of the kitchen conversation as well. Have you, do you want to talk about that? That was from kind of the meeting before and then they were here again, so, do you guys want to talk about that?
Um, yeah, we got to talk to the cooks like, um, what kind of foods we liked and what kind of foods that we could put into the menu and what kind of foods like had too much, for example, like sodium in the account.
So, Bulldog, Bulldog Leapin', I was there and there was, we raked all the leaves around and we tore up that tar behind the end zone on one side and buried placed that up there. And there is a lot of leaves that raked, so I think we should do it like every other year or something, because there got to be a lot of leaves in back and forth to compost pile, so.
And any other highlights from this quarter? If you guys have one, maybe make a comment or, what was your favorite part about this quarter or semester or school year?
Pass it down.
Homecoming week.
Or does the board have some questions for them?
Heidi, were any of you in the meeting with, or were all of you in the meeting with the kitchen people?
Yeah, all just like you and us.
So when they were, the other group mentioned that, that things had to be taken out because of the high sodium. Was there any mention as to whether, because I don't know what items they're talking about, but, because sometimes you can get the same item with more sodium calories. Was there any discussion of that?
They're trying to find, different ways to, or like, try to find different replacements, so like, taste is the same or better, but it's less sodium, less, or calories.
That's all, thank you. Because I know pot pies can be high in sodium, so if they figured out more, then they should be, there's still hope, you might get some new stuff back.
Perry, why don't you mention what they talked about with the chicken pot pies? Because that was one that we tried and you guys really liked, and then what did they find out for next year?
Well, the biscuits were good.
And they found out there's like, too high in sodium, right?
Yeah.
And they found new, like, a new recipe.
That there was actually a recipe they could make more from scratch instead of preserve, that the kids liked it so much and it was kind of that conversation and then Eileen went back and found a recipe, she thinks that within our kitchen resources that they could do.
Well, food you said homemade, that was pretty much, where, where the sodium comes in, is anytime it's pre-made, it's kind of preservative.
Yeah, so, so we think we're going to give that a try next year in order to keep the chicken pot pie, because it was, you guys liked it, didn't you? It was one that went over really well, so.
So in general, do you like the food?
I think it's getting better.
Yeah.
It's always, it's always good if it's getting better.
Yeah, because they're taking out the ones that no one likes, so that helps.
Okay. It doesn't do any good in the garbage can, does it? How do you eat it?
The one thing we have found is we've talked a lot about the apples, the apples that they like and that they don't like, so we've been able to kind of narrow down some of those and I think overall people like the fruit. It's just kind of narrowing down which ones are good. Trying to find some ways to make red beans, we have to get so many red beans into the menu. So that was one of the questions that Eileen had for us last week, was how they would like to have their red beans, red and black beans.
Wasn't there something about like the green beans, are they trying to find other recipes to use the, because we have to have at least like one vegetable that's like green in one of our lunches? And they, we had talked more like how we could make like tater tot pot dishes, have the green beans, like vegetable inserted into that, so if anyone wanted to, we could use it.
Maybe, maybe from scratch.
Because I was surprised, that was something I, she was surprised about was that you guys would like the green beans like in the tater tot pot dish, because she was in her own, that it just had to be the hamburger and the tater tots and what she found was they really liked to have vegetables in it, so, yeah.
I think it's great, because it works if you're all working together. And when you're working with the, the kitchen people, everything's going to get better, right? Good?
Well, it's kind of hard to say, well, the kids don't like it, if the kids do like it, and you're there to tell them, yes, we do, or the other way around, too, well, the kids will love this.
So they meet a couple times a year with the kitchen crew?
Yeah, we, we talked about that to our last meeting and it's been really beneficial. We've probably met three times, I think, since semester, since you guys last met with us. Um, and now we're looking at doing it every, every quarter, to kind of get things in touch, so. Any other last comments looking forward? We had one, we, we do need to have one representative from this group talk to Max about the softball field or that, so we'll do that next week. We just kind of ran out of time because it was Friday when we met. Um, there is a question they had for that, him. And anything, anything else? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody, and if I can get your name tags back over.
Okay, now, we now are on number two. Review and consider approval of resignation of Beverly Beers, sub collar effective May 13th. Number two is review, uh... Oh, excuse me, I'm, I'm down to my, yep. Review and consider approval of revise 2013-14 school calendar.
Board members, all this does really reflect what happened this school year, so we wanted to revise and make sure that we have the accurate calendar. That's all the school days that we've made up and really, where they will end for the year. So I would certainly recommend approval.
Okay, motion by Lou, uh, second by Cheryl, okay? Um, any further discussion? Take a moment, any comments, public comments on this one? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. Okay, now we're to person. Um, review and consider approval, uh, approval of resignation of Betty Seaman, uh, food service effective July 31st, 2014.
It's a resignation. Uh, we hate to see Betty leave, uh, soon as, and if the board approves this, although I don't know what we would do if we didn't approve it, because I think she is heads out, um, we will advertise to, to replace her. That's our intent right now. If, um, we can't find a suitable replacement, then we'll have to look at how we want to continue with that, but right now, our intent is after talking with, uh, the head of food, to, to head cooks at both buildings on how we wanted to proceed with this resignation, we will try to replace Betty at this point.
Just out of curiosity, you guys do exit interviews or something if it's something that's not coming from a budget issue?
They have not, we've not had, at least had this kind of fact, doing, we can certainly do it, um, talking with Betty, and again, it's just a simple retirement, she has enjoyed her time here, but certainly we could start looking at doing something along those lines, gaining some information from people or executives.
Yeah, whatever makes it better. Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
So?
Motion by Cheryl, I'll second this one. Second by Bruce. Um, any further discussion?
She's been here a lot, a lot of years, so she is sure of the happiness.
And I meant to put yours down, I forgot to grab those years, so.
I just had the thing in front of me. Don't want to, it's a 29, it's really...
I'm assuming it's at least 29 years, but I'll, I'll report back to board because I think we should recognize the long service to the history.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no? Passed. Review and consider approval of resignation of Beverly Beers, sub collar effective May 30th, 2014.
Resignation, uh, we've had some meaningful, or some calls in the morning for staff for one hour, um, so she has resigned, so right now we'll look at our options. Certainly one option would be to hire somebody to replace that particular piece. There are also a, a number of automated systems that we're going to look at before we make the decision on this one. There are certainly some advantages and disadvantages, no matter which direction we go with this. So we'll kind of take a look at it, um, we'll work with the administration on that and we'll get some costs and come back to the board with our recommendation.
One of most schools, do, everybody got the same situation?
Most schools now have moved automated systems. There's a, there's a number of, um, subservices that we'll find the subs for you, and it's all automated. It is, it works pretty well for both the employee and, and employer, um, so we'll certainly look at that, um, even do a cost analysis of what a cost doing it, the way we're doing it, what would cost if we moved one of the automated systems. With the, the new, uh, with the new Healthcare Act, there is some advantages for us to have it being done through the, um, an alternative group. And, because they'll track the subs that you're using and those types of things, so there's some advantages, we'll, that way, and we'll look at both of those, the pros and the cons, no matter what we decide to do.
Okay, we have motion to approve. Motion by Deb.
Second.
Second by Cheryl. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. Review and consider approval of hiring Priscilla Laubach, band driver, effective May 7th, 2014, to the end of the 2013, 2014 school year or until a student, tell the student to longer require transportation.
This is one of the transportation pieces that we need to provide, so I would certainly recommend that we do it.
Motion by Deb. Second by Lou. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. Uh, now we're to informational reports, so.
Thank you again for listening to our students. It's always a joy to have them come and present things and talk about how the days are going here at school. Um, I have just a few things to kind of update you on. We are finishing up with testing this week, we're hoping to be done, and then, um, start looking at those scores even before the end of the year, um, so teachers can kind of start to plan and, and look at curriculum and things, um, through the summer to be ready for, um, the start of the year next year. Our sixth graders are busy planning their sixth grade party, which will be next week, and then we have our baccalaureate practice, um, and graduation practice and checking requirements and all of those things going on, um, during these last few weeks of school. Um, along with that, we did finalize the scheduling, um, with everything that kind of passed through the board the last time around, so we will be actually sitting down with students, coming up with their next year's schedule over the next couple of weeks and then I'll be able to get you numbers as well, um, in those different classes, uh, once that is complete, because we did kind of the pre-schedule as far as what classes are you interested in. Now that we actually have the classes by period, they'll sit down and figure out what their day will look like, so hopefully by the beginning of June, I'll be able to have those numbers for you. Okay, any questions that you might have?
I have one. Um, with your scheduling for the classes, do, do, you know, the kids go home with this information probably, talk it over with their parents? Are you setting up some sort of a, a template for these kids?
Yes.
So parents can be a little more active in how that works?
The middle school, the schedule is set, um, because they have to take certain classes, they don't have any choices except for band choir humanities, and that's something that we talk with the students, you know, what is their interest in? And, um, hopefully they know that parents can call if there's, there's a change, because people can volunteer for band. The high school, yeah, nine through 12, back in January, um, we handed out the curriculum books, their current credit sheets, as well as their registration sheet, and sent that home. We allow that to be home for a, a week to a week and a half with parents, and then we get that returned. Because we needed numbers earlier, we, we return that, put that in the system. Usually what we do is we align it with the fall, the winter conferences, so it goes home about a week and a half to two weeks early, comes back with a student at winter conferences, then teachers sit down with that student and their parents and they look at what their credit sheet is, what are their interests, what are they looking at, you know, walking out of our building with? And then they schedule what they want for classes, and that's how we get an average number of how many students want advanced art, how many students want calculus, et cetera. Then with that, we, we take and say, "Okay, I have 45 students that want pre-calculus", so then I come to you and say, you know, "In that schedule," or when you look at cuts, "How many sections of pre-calculus I need?" And, um, when we've gone through staffing, then I take those classes, put it into a schedule, and at that point, then Jackie goes through with each student, from their sheet that they filled out with their parents and their advisor, we sit down and arrange their date, and we, we give them out a schedule now, it'll be tomorrow, we start with the juniors, and say, "Okay, now look at this, set up a time with our Jackie, our counselor," and they take that home, working with their parents, figure out what they think their day will look like or what they would like it to look like. Then they bring that back in, work with Jackie, see if it works with numbers and classes, and then it goes back home with a final signature with parents, et cetera.
So when they have this worksheet, is that worksheet a, like a fixed template that the parent puts it at?
Well, it's a paper sheet at this point, next year I'm hoping to go online with that new JMC program, but it is a fixed template, fixed template type thing. I can show it to you if you want to stand up.
Heidi, I said today, I did look at that curriculum book that has all the stuff in it, and, and for a lot of parents, I think you might look at that and really not understand if your child has this interest, how do you get them there? So, in the initial planning and, and if it gets to where it kind of looks like, "We're heading them there," or the parents are helping them get, you can get for it.
Right, and that's where we have the two worksheets that go home with them, but then also that meeting, and that's why we have such good attendance at our winter conferences, we really do, with our senior high students, because we talk with their advisor about their schedules. That is the primary piece to that conference time, so that they can have that dialogue and ask questions and, because if you're somebody who hasn't looked at that before, it is confusing. You know, what are our local requirements, what are state requirements, what do college, my, my child wants to go to a two-year college and go into hydraulics, or my child wants to go into business, or my child wants, and that's something that Jackie does a very good job in, one, keeping our faculty abreast as far as what some of the different colleges or requirements are out there, so that they can relay that to parents in meetings, and then if there's more questions, they kind of refer those parents and students to her and then they set up a separate meeting, and that's what primarily her whole spring is meeting with parents and students on scheduling and looking ahead, if it's sophomores and juniors looking at job shadowing during the summer or next year, or looking at visiting colleges. Most of our students use their three college visits that we give them, that don't count against them for attendance, and Jackie's very instrumental in setting those up and making sure they're relevant to... to what the student and the parent sees the wants are or their destination, at least at this time. You know, kids change. You know, you may have students that are interested in engineering as a junior and then they cross over and they want to do something different as a senior. So she kind of helps them with that. So, but certainly I can stop down.
Curious and I don't know if anybody else is. But I think it's real important that in the ninth grade, these kids get off to a start that they want and to make sure the parents are fully engaged in what's going on and.
And that with our new career readiness statute. We have a careers course that students take in the ninth grade. But part of that new statute and we'll be having a committee together of teachers and students and probably some parents as well, will be working on formalizing that and improving what we already do. Our staff spent one staff meeting already, what are the things that we do to help students recognize different careers out there, what their interests are, are they doing what they need to do in classes? And it was amazing, we had that whole whiteboard full of what different classes in different areas are doing. But I do think it needs to be more formalized. And that's part of this career readiness or the workforce statute that's out there. So it'll improve, probably change some of the things that we're doing. But I think it will, in the end, make the experience for our students better.
I know what my son was in for the, we think, some of the paperwork there. It was relatively difficult to explain because that could happen, obviously it was the first year that came to the system. But it also had tentative career paths in it.
Yeah.
And it would seem like, let's just say it was very interesting.
Yes, and that's part of, they take that then as a ninth grade in that careers class and they go through more detail. That's part of the class is, okay, just look into what those interests are and what you're going to do. All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have a report from the elementary school principal.
Good afternoon. Nothing real new to announce. I just wanted to make you aware, the elementary, we're wrapping up our MCA testing. We'll finish the science sometime this week. And it's been a grueling month for students and staff and lining up computers and things like that. But the scores were excellent from what we can tell so far. Growth has been really good. So we're really excited for when the results become official in August and then we can share those. But it looks really good so far, so we're really proud of our students. End of the school year, we have a lot of activities going on. On Friday, we have our bulldog field day and we'll be eating lunch at the gazebo park. And so it'll be lots of students and families out there if you guys are interested in stopping by that. Friday, we also, the fifth grade has their science and water festival out at the Bible camp. And we work with the DNR and the high school, some of the high school students. And that's put on by Mary Keeble and she's done a great job with that over the years. And so the fifth grade will be out there. And on May 15th, we have our all-school recess that we do with, I think this year we're doing it with SAD. Is that right? And they'll come over and get the kids doing some activities and things like that. So we just kind of, you know, wrap up the school year with some social activities and we prepare the fifth graders as they, they'll go through a little graduation at the end of the year. And on May 21st, they'll be coming over here for an orientation. We walk over and we eat lunch here and we take a tour, things like that. So it's kind of a good ending for the grade students. Any questions for me, Don?
Any question, Amy? So the MCA's, you get some test scores up, but what kind of early feedback do you get before the state results come in?
We won't really get any feedback. The reason, we get results, but they're not official. And so we're not allowed to share those.
So, okay, but you actually get the results earlier than they're disclosed to public?
Yeah.
We don't get any state comparisons and that type of stuff until after.
We just know how our individual students.
So they don't release that until you prepare something?
No, because what will happen is once, once everybody, once all the testing is done, they'll, sometimes they'll take into account if, you know, eighty percent of the students got question number five wrong. They may adjust the test that way. And so sometimes the percentages change. Special ed students who take the modified, some of that is still done paper pencil. And so those results aren't out yet. It just gives the state legs to release that right around the state fair. And, but it gives us the advantage of planning. We'll already, our leadership team will meet next week and then during the in-service and we'll already be starting on our goals for next year. And it will be based on how our students have done so far.
So that's a result, these are all computer tests? You just start generating immediately or is that?
Yes.
I've often wondered why we can't seem to get those scores before the state tests or before the state fair. But it is what it is.
But in the planning process, we are getting enough information. Can you see where clearly we might have a potential deficiency? So that in the planning process, we are trying to catch up for next year without having to wait from the state?
Yeah, it gives you a decent breakdown. Don Knoll does most of our data mining. He'll, she'll work with all of us to individually with teachers, grade levels, and they'll look at areas where students were deficient and make adjustments next year.
Part of it, I think we do get a good breakdown in both math and reading. I will tell you, for science, I have talked to, I've talked to the commissioner on this one. At MDE, we do not get the needed breakdown in order to help us understand what we're doing well and what we're not doing well. The only, when I called MDE, the only answer I get is that they would need to make the science test larger in order to get us more information. And my comment remains, make it larger, give us the information that we need in order to have a better idea than just giving us a percentage on life science. Life science is a fairly big deal. Doesn't give us a whole lot when we've done right, when we haven't done right.
We've come a long ways though in five years or so of being able to use the data a little bit quicker and make it a little more beautiful.
That's a good job. When it comes to the state part, has it always been that way, so it's a state fair thing?
Yeah, since they implemented the state test, they've always released it at the state fair.
Because it's just not logical that you work your tails off to get this all in place and get the kids through it and then you don't have a total analysis before you have to find another.
I mean, so we do get some and they do want to make sure that everything ran the way that it needs to run. But one of the reasons they went to electronic tests is so that they can get us the information back faster.
At least we're admitting before school starts. They're working in the past. You didn't, you were already like in October before you get the results.
We had the government shut down one or two years ago.
Was it January?
That threw things off a little bit. So there's a lot of variables. It is, it is all on computer now, which really helps us.
And we are getting more than what we used to get. That's good. Hopefully we'll continue to get more from the state as we go off this road.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Next, we have community education director's report.
I'm sending out our current summer brochure, which is in the mail. So that has a highlight of many of our summer activities. I'm sure you all received it in the mail too, probably. We're nearing our fiscal year end, of course. And then with the fitness center and community ed, it's a very good year then this year. We do have a name for our new school aged childcare program. It's going to be called PAWS. That's what our group, our advisory group came up with. So we're just finalizing many of the main details of that. And we're going to have setting up site visits for May here to finalize our program. We have a good database list of those that are interested in next year. And so we'll be communicating directly with those people.
Is it PAWS like a PA?
Bulldog PAWS. P-A-W-S. Any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you. Activities coordinators report.
Basically just been scheduling and rescheduling our air buses, games, moving them from five o'clock to four o'clock because now they're becoming double headers. Or we're playing a team once and they're playing another team after that. So that takes up almost all of my day and a pretty crazy time. I think Miss Flor already mentioned students are getting a fair amount of class because of that, missing the latter portions of the day. If it wasn't busy enough, we organized a spring cleanup day. Would have been April 26th, I think, on a Saturday. We got a lot of work done here. Really in a couple of weeks, we'll be hitting playoff time. I think this shut off.
Go ahead.
In a couple of weeks, we'll be doing playoff time and then we'll be down to just varsity only activities. And then gearing up to start all over again. Any questions?
Do you know?
I just wake up and wonder if I have an umpire or whatever, short on those.
You do do a very good job. I didn't even cut out first one. No. Every time I see it rain, I just, I can picture you at the desk going, no.
Well, I think we have a superintendent that would like to control the snow. And you would like to control the rain for the rest of the day, probably the snow also.
And that's part of the softball field. While we, everything gets rescheduled and the answered questions continues to, how come we're playing on this field? Do I have to practice get to move to that field? Well, we're shifting stuff all the time. Well, the snow melted the, like, two days before our junior high even played on that field. And the alternative was to cancel a game or play with a home plate that wasn't completely fastened, you know, down. Which I guess the decision was to play the game rather than, no, it wasn't a safety issue or anything like that. So, but that's, that was kind of. Anything else? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next, we have the building and ground supervisors report.
Three times the testing of our water in the school and drinking bottles for lead. And we got the results back yesterday. And I should say, high school middle school passed, the elementary school passed, the vocational building passed. But the adult community ed center did not. It's a little high in lead. And I had talked to boss plumbing and what we can do and most of the plates are copper, which should be no problem. And he said, well, the only thing is we might have a faucet that might be made in Taiwan or someplace with a little lead in it. So he just recommended that we run our water for thirty seconds or more. And the only, I talked to Matt, the only thing he does over there is probably gets coffee once in a while. There is no drinking of coffee over there. It's just a sink, so we live doing that. Upcoming projects this summer, and we hope to put steel on the garage and repair some of the roofs. I have a contractor come out and look at the bad spots and patch them. I do want to talk a little bit about the canvases that were brought up by the kids. I do not think they should go in the bathrooms because of the fact that we have a C3 machine. It is, we spray the walls down. And it's all paper tunnels, wet paper tunnels and apples. And I don't think they're going to last in the bathrooms. I totally recommend putting outside the bathroom.
And I'll talk to the, I mean, they can talk about that and they've been so respectful of the others who work in the building. Because I brought that up with the group. And they, at least at that point, felt like they really still felt they should go there because that's what people look. But I think it's a good conversation to have with them again before we put them up.
You said that you thought there'd be frames and glass. I would never put glass.
Not glass, it's like, it's the plexiglass. Not, not glass, glass, but the plexiglass.
That's what I did, that's when I looked at Donnie right away.
Yeah, no, no, not glass, it's the plexiglass glass to protect the artwork itself.
It would have to be all the way around, I mean.
Right, so, but it's a conversation we can have with them again. I think the idea is to get the students to see them and feel.
This spraying that you're, that you're talking about, that's where they're cleaning, right? Yeah, so if they're spraying the walls, how are they going to keep that? You'd have to encase the whole thing in like glass.
So we'll have to talk with them again. I'm sure we can come up with a thought there.
I think they're great, but I don't think that's the place.
What we'll probably do, Donnie, is maybe have you and I and that part group or representatives of that group, maybe sit down and talk about some options.
I do appreciate all the work that the Booster Club and John Riley did. Saved us a lot of time and it looks great.
Good.
And I'm still waiting, or we are still waiting on the recommissioning for high school middle school. It is at Excel Energy and they are going to email us when they are finished with it. But I haven't been able to work yet.
I have talked with both of them. I'll be good at that. They're hoping, last I heard, when I got a voice message from Ula, is that they're really hoping to push through and be done with it this week. So I'm hoping to call in tomorrow and see where they're at so that we can set up another meeting, special board meeting for us to hear the secondary issues.
Any questions?
Just out of curiosity, in the reserve center, did we ever check the water in there? Now nobody's drinking it, or is the water just all shut off?
It's all shut off. The water's gone, there's no water.
In being sure of brought that up, I'm certainly going to bring that up to the facility committee meeting because again, there will be a certain amount of pressure from the government to be using that building. But the question will be, is for what? And with declining enrollment, there's going to be, going to need to be the discussion about whether we need that building. You know, it's hard for me to say we're going to spend money to get it ADA compliant and other things if we don't have a purpose for that building. So just be aware that that discussion will be coming your way.
Okay, thank you. Next was a special board meeting that we had last week, Thursday. And we spoke a little bit about the conference that we all went to as board members and some of the things that we learned and ideas that we gathered from that conference. We also had our report from UHL, well, roof report, excuse me. Roof report from another company called Roof One. And it was kind of an different perspective than we had on the other roof presentation, which was very interesting. And then after that, we talked about the school PR and what things that we could do to steer the growth of the school rather than declining enrollment. And it's a big project and we need lots of input, had lots of ideas. Everybody was actively involved in the discussion, which was great. Then, next, I move to Lou on the facility and equipment meeting.
Well, we met and decided that we needed to cut fifty thousand dollars from, fifty, yeah, fifty thousand dollars from the capital expenditure. And we came up with thirty-three thousand five hundred, if I remember right.
Yep.
And that team, probably some of it was building repair, or excuse me, the boiler repair took part of that and went down the line, water pumps on both the elementary and the high school. And security cameras, high school lockers, we discussed that. And security cameras, high school lockers, we discussed that. And I know Max had almost as much money as he needed for creatures. We needed two more dollars, we're discussing that. And we talked about vans, we need two vans. Donnie, you're looking at, looking into some of that. And we have discussed how we're going to accomplish that. We have some other ideas, we're hoping that works out. And that's about all. We just didn't have enough money, you know, we tried to take more from what we did that.
Yeah, what's...
It was all an emotional...
In the end, what's happening is my reserve fund, what little there is, is getting smaller. Because we cut about thirty-two, that's all, thirty-two to thirty-five out of the fifty that I would have liked to have kept because I would have liked to have kept over a hundred thousand in our reserve fund. We have too many things that we need to get done. So, the reserve fund is going to get hit so that we get some of the things done that we need.
Then I'll move to Kala on continuing education meeting.
We met on the floor. What were you saying?
Oh, wait.
And like I said in the past, it's kind of a working meeting. Mrs. Pfeiffer decided not to introduce, there's an online way of processing the continuing yet. But she's not going to introduce that this year, she's going to hold off, and maybe do that next year. We talked about the calendar for next year, and I'll frequently will meet. And then she also thought she would visit the committee policy for this continuing education over the summer. I don't think it's been revised in a while.
Good idea. I like the teamwork on the policy, for all of us sitting on the policy committee. Honestly, if we could get participation, I think it would help us some. Next will be our superintendent's administration.
Just a few things, we already talked about a number of things that would have been on my agenda. I have talked to you, hopefully, and we'll get them coming out soon for that because that's when the work really comes to start to talk with that facility group about what will the project look like. I've also got elders coming out this week. We're going to talk about possible funding if we go that way in the timelines that we need to meet. So, we're just continuing to get ready for next year. Next meeting, I'll come back to the board with just our budget adjustments for this school year, current school year, so that the board has a better idea about where we're at. Fundraiser, the bad fundraiser for the fruit and spring and bloom sales, they did make three thousand one hundred eighty-three dollars. So, pretty good fundraising for... Continue to work on teacher evaluation requirements, but we've kind of got it down to a final draft type of thing. I will bring, I know that Deb was a member of, the evaluation committee last time was okay. So, once I get closer to final draft, we'll bring Deb in. She was the board member that was on that committee board, just like I'm running through her. There was just no sense in her being part of that committee until we came up with something that we're going to recommend. But we're getting closer at every meeting. I'm hoping that one or two more meetings, and we'll be able to come back to the board with what we believe our proposal will be to meet the state requirements for the evaluation, teacher evaluation system. We're also looking at a school climate transformation grant. This is a mental health grant. The average award for it is about two hundred and one thousand, all right? It's got to be, it's a collaborative grant between, and we have not started a discussion with the city. I've set up a meeting for that, but it is a grant between the district and the community. So, we're, I think it's interesting enough that we're really interested in pursuing this particular grant. Whether we have a chance to get it or not, I don't know. But it would be very advantageous for us to get this particular grant. So, we're going to just be aware, we'll come back to the board, and we'll present more as it starts to shake out a little bit more. We're a little bit too early to bring a full presentation to the board at this time. Let's see, I think that's a volunteer, then if I can get this on. I told the board last time that I had a... I'm not sure. You notice, right where I looked, this is a presentation that one of our, our teachers put on with his class about getting their kids ready for the MCA tests. And I thought he would enjoy it. It is on our website, but we get...
Fortraisers, we're here today for the task ahead of us, the MCA's.
The task is upon us. Let's make our parents our school and our family proud.
It's messy, we worked hard this year.
Imagine.
Sweet eyes and fractions.
Those were really hard.
And that's what I'm talking about!
It must be a lot of hard work.
We analyzed and understood story elements.
Endless bushfire.
Expect nothing less.
I was trying to make it happen.
That's the bulldog way.
Say you're every bulldog in town, that's the beginning of time.
I'm the worst.
We're ready.
No, we're harder.
All comes down to this one test.
The language of the nation shows the world how smart we are.
Oh, my God.
I'm not saying it's going to be easy, this is going to be tough.
Both of us get tough with it.
We even choose to take it slow.
Get the entire question in.
We get it twisted down, it's the most important.
There.
Ever.
Give up. Your tools.
Bring them up.
The person who's good at taking shots really tells you these great things.
Failure is not enough.
I'm too hard.
You.
You.
Definition.
Look to the person who's right.
He or she is on your side.
The white one says, be the enemy to your right.
He or she has all the personal trust in you, you're clapping.
He as well.
Most important.
Much greater, sir.
Never give up.
Never surrender.
I bless nor man, nor woman, nor child.
Get how menacing we are.
We are bulldogs.
I mean, something.
Don't be.
They're ugly face again.
Do I swear?
No, I didn't.
If you miss me, go to school.
Just to show you, our students are working really hard on those state tests. That's all I have.
Okay, are there sharing?
I just had a question, how do you count the computers and the programming?
As far as the tag that we're no longer, we're...
Yeah, yes.
Yeah. We're going to have to look, the technology committee is moving on that. We are going to be short computers, so there's a few options. One is, right now, we're on a six-year cycle. One option is to move that cycle forward a year because we do end up with the technology. We still have one payment left on our technology piece that we have out there. It's about seventy-five thousand to seventy-nine thousand, in that range. If we repurchase now, we need to understand that it's adding that seventy-nine thousand to whatever we would repurchase. The problem will be is that, again, we don't have the capital to cover it. We just can't, we don't have the money to go out and buy it. But now we're short computers because we're getting rid of those computers in the elementary school. So, the option would be is, if we do do a facility or a bonding, to one way would be have a technology question on there. That will certainly be something that I'm very interested in bringing forward to the facility group. Or the other piece would be to refinance what we have now and add additional computers to it. So, it's always typically, we buy the new ones for the high school, and then the older ones, which are better than ones exiting out, get moved on into the elementary school. So, we're still looking at it.
Is it necessary for all those computers to be kind of the same?
They don't have to all be the same, but they have to have an operating system that's going to be supported by Microsoft. And that's the problem with the ones that are going out, is that that operating system is no longer supported by Microsoft, which means you're susceptible to all kinds of nasty little things. That's why we're removing them out of the building, getting them off our network.
So, if somebody had a newer computer?
I would, I would tell you that I've tried that in the past, never works very well.
Because it's something else.
Now, somebody has newer computers, anytime I've been involved in those things, and maybe we'll run into an exception, anytime I have been involved in that, we've ended up to spend, I've ended up spending the money to remove the computer and getting rid of it. People tend not to give the computers that are really operational. And there is something to be said about having the same type of computer that are easy to fix and to manage.
When you take like a business like ours, all of our stuff is all pretty much new because we have to, and lots of companies are the same. And what we're getting rid of is probably faster than what you already have.
Yeah, that would, that may be true. We'd have to look at it, and I'd have to have our technology person take a look to see if it would work. I just know that past experience, I've ended up telling everyone because typically, people keep those things for a long time. They get new ones, they think they're doing better, but we end up disposing of them, which costs us money usually rather than is helpful.
I was just thinking, the price could be right, if we could...
If we get them, and we'll certainly look at them, but I can't promise. We'd have to take a look to see if it's really worth our effort to do it. I don't want to take something and then end up having to dispose of it.
Other questions? I have one more question, I'm project lead the way. We went to industry, and we got a meeting with industry. We talked about setting up a committee that was going to follow that. I'm kind of in motion on that.
Actually, not quite there yet, Bruce, because we're still in the fundraising mode. We're about sixty percent there or so. So, I'm looking at having another meeting with maybe some other businesses in order to get there. But then, yes, there will be a committee, but probably, we're going to be looking more towards end of June or July by the time we're at that step. So, that's going to where we're at right now.
Because I think if you, if we create that activity of business and industry, that it will help that program. So, I just think it should probably be something we get rolling on. And actually, you have enough money to run this coming years program?
We have enough for the middle school for sure. We're not there all the way to the high school.
And that's probably not going to happen until next year.
It's equipment that we're looking at.
With the equipment piece.
We're still working on it.
So, but we will be putting together partnership I've had. Some people already throwing their aim into the hat as far as wanting to be part of that committee and stuff. I've been in contact with those businesses, talking to them. This is kind of a timeline for their donations and those kinds of things. So, we're still moving forward.
And they're really, as things start to unfold, there's a lot of legislation that's coming out that we're going to need to work with, the world's best workforce, our strategic planning, curriculum. There's a lot of things that we'll need to mesh together. And I think the strategic plan piece will really help us move forward on a lot of things that we're going to need to do.
Okay. If nothing else, obtain a motion to... I don't know if our motion went through. Second by the barrel. Any further discussion, I want to favor say aye. Aye.